For order, today is Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, can you please take the roll call?
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac. City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. We will now take public comments on agenda-related items. If you have a comment on tonight's agenda items, please come forward, state your name, address, and fill out the sign on the sheet provided. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Letters to the council will not be read publicly. Do we have any members of the public who would like to step forward and make any comments on agenda-related items? Seeing none, moving on. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk on the consent agenda will be considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up to the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session, consideration of scheduling a public hearing for the countywide parks and recreational master plan on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, consideration of the 32nd Annual Victorian Sleigh Bell Parade and All Christmas Weekend. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll take the roll call.
Yep.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of approving the purchase of a crane truck. The Sewage Department operates a crane truck which is utilized for lifting pumps, valves, and other heavy equipment. The current truck is a 130, the current truck number 130 is a 2,000 GMC K-3500 and is scheduled for replacement. A quote was solicited from Garnet Ford through Michigan Deals Contract 071B7700181 for a cabin chassis, service body, and crane. The cabin chassis and service body will be paid from the motor pool fund and the crane will be paid out of the sewer operating budget. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of a 2022 Ford F40 CMV nine-foot service body and EC 3200 stellar crane in the amount of $82,543 from Garnet Ford. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes, I do. Sorry. I was gonna keep my mouth shut, but I couldn't. So, this truck, when you order it, you're not gonna get it till like 2023?
Um, no, that's not the case. We will probably have it within four to six months, I would say.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, okay. And it's needed, like?
Yes.
Just because it's scheduled to be replaced, it's?
Yeah.
You can't stretch it out another year or two?
Well, we have been doing that for quite a few years now, and I think the last seven, eight vehicles between the Public Works Police and the City Hall vehicle, we have had mechanical failures, engine transmission. That's happened actually before we've replaced it, before the new vehicle arrived. So, this one, we've had budgeted for two years now. Last year during COVID, with the shutdowns of the manufacturers, and especially the equipment that is needed on this truck, we couldn't get it. So, we held it off and put it into the current budget year, and now we're trying to move forward with that purchase.
Okay. What else do you have coming up? So, I don't have to keep asking the same questions, like?
If you read in the city manager's update last Friday, weekly update, we had another pickup truck scheduled for this year, just a standard pickup truck, and we had our cold patch machine. The cold patch machine, we've been limping that along, and it's, 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 it's at the end of its life. However, we had another machine, it's called an MB, and that was the little articulated yellow machine that snowblowed the sidewalks during the wintertime, and then we also had a broom on it to broom the sand at the beaches and sidewalks and that sort of thing. That had a severe hydraulic failure this, early this summer, and it is, we found out it's the only machine in the state of Michigan, so we can't get parts for it, and we actually auctioned it off in our last auction. So, we've been researching how to get back those capabilities. We did buy a broom that'll fit on our current, what we call a mini loader, it's a small Whacker Newsen loader, but we don't have the capabilities to snow blow. The Whacker Newsen has a snow blower, but that's used downtown to clear the sidewalks first thing, and we like to have a second machine out that's clearing the sidewalks around the schools when we have those big snowfalls. So, what we're proposing is to not purchase the pickup this year, not purchase the cold patcher this year, and those two budgeted items are almost equal to what a new mini loader would be, and then those other two that we're deferring, we would put in a future year.
Okay.
So, we, the only thing that I have coming forward would be that mini loader.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay.
Was some of this money in the motor pool already, Jeff?
Yeah, the cash is in the motor pool already, and it's been budgeted out for that.
Did we talk about this before? Why don't we remember?
What are you gonna do with the old one?
The, the old crane truck? We will auction it off like we've done with the other vehicles.
What do you anticipate you may get for it?
Um, with the old chassis, the cabin chassis, I mean, it's, it's old. So, that alone is probably worth a thousand bucks. The box on it is newer, it was replaced probably nine years ago, so we may get, get some value out of that, but I would hope in the $4,000 range.
Okay. Where do those go to the auction, though? I'm just curious.
Well, we, the last, since I've been here, we've tried a couple different things. The city has tried several different things over the past, say, 15 years. They, we've run ads in the paper and let the high bidder purchase. I think when Councilman Bachman was the Public Safety Director, he tried to do some other things online, and what we found is McMillan Auctions specializes in selling municipal equipment, and they do it for dozens of communities across Michigan and Illinois, Ohio. So, there's a, they've got a whole database of people that purchase these, they market them online. We've had three auctions since I've been here that McMillan has run, and because we've had enough stuff, they've come right to our site and auctioned them off. I think the one we did this summer, we were just below 50 grand in proceeds, which was pretty good, so.
Councilmembers, do you have any other questions?
I got, I got one more question. Do you have a problem with, like, the employees that use the trucks on a regular basis, like, not, like, I guess, kind of like running them into the ground, like, not taking care of them or driving appropriately?
Yeah, the, the replacements are not based on abuse.
Okay.
They're, they're just used every day, and, you know, I was thinking about it this morning. I have one son that's graduated two years ago, I have another one that's graduating this year. We bought the truck we're talking about tonight before they were even born. I mean, it's going on 21, close to 22 years, so they just get old, they get tired, and they get worn out.
Okay.
Jeff, can we get an updated list on all the trucks? We had it the last time, I remember, you sent it to Mr. Taylor, and then Taylor sent it, but it was so small, you couldn't even read it without a magnifying glass.
Yeah.
Can we get a new one?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, we keep that updated.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else, any further discussion? Heather, please take the vote.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a grant application of the Manistee Family Disc Golf Course. The Parks Commission and Department of Public Works have been working to develop a family disc golf course at First Street Beach Douglas Park. The city has approved, has been approved by the Manistee Community Foundation to submit a grant request to the Mingler, Minger Fund. The total project has been budgeted at $60,115, $15,000, with a $34,565 in, of in-kind services, $3,050 cash match, and a $22,500 in grant proceeds. The in-kind services will be provided by the DPW and volunteers to construct the park and install the equipment. The cash match will be provided from the Parks Department operating funds. At this time, council could take action to approve a grant application to the Minger Fund in the amount of $22,000, $22,500, and agree to a minimum of $3,050 cash match. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion?
I think it's a great, great idea, and I think it's good use of the property, and I think the community will benefit from it.
I think we discussed all this about the disc golf quite a while ago, and I don't see a reason why not. The only thing is, Jeff, how much are the DPW gonna put into it, you know, instead of all these volunteers that are working on it?
Well, you're correct, first of all, you're correct. Tom O'Leary, who's in the audience, there's actually, because the Parks Commission's given their annual update, we've got several members of the Parks Commission here, but do you remember when you did that, Tom? Was it in January?
Yeah, it was in January.
I remember it was a, one of our Zoom meetings before we were back in person, but a presentation was done with the concept and the benefits for it. City council supported that and then also gave the Parks Commission permission to go out and seek funding, including grant funds and donations. So, there was an application made to the Consumers Energy Foundation that was not successful. They prioritized their, their grant proceeds from this year towards helping communities and offsetting some of the COVID actions. The foundation, when you apply for a grant through the Community Foundation, you have to go through a, a early vetting process, which Tom and Tim O'Connor did and got that approved, and so now we've got the full application together. It requires a 10% cash match, so that's why we have to have a resolution from council committing to that. As far as what the DPW is pledging, we're pledging a little bit of money because I want to survey the south line of the park. There's a lot of residents on Harbor Drive that back right up to that park, and so we want to be very clear where the limits are, and we'll put in some, some permanent T-posts so that the public is also aware of where the boundaries of the park are and, and, you know, we don't have any trespass issues. The park is, the disc golf course has been laid out so that the place shouldn't interfere with that private property whatsoever. The other things that, that we have pledged is physically forming and pouring the pads, the tee pads where you, where you throw from, installing the baskets in, in the concrete, and then, as you're aware, there was a lot of volunteer effort last fall and last spring to kind of carve out some of the path and some of the undergrowth to make it more accessible and enjoyable. So, you know, some of that is included in there, but really, it's, it's using our labor and equipment, and then working with any volunteer help that we can or that we have available to spread woodchips and, and some of the pathways and stuff. We also included, in the grant is included signage and buying all the equipment, all the materials, so there's really not a lot of out-of-pocket, it's just some of our time.
Good. That's, I was just concerned, how much time we were putting in, and, and whether, how many volunteers we got to help out?
Well, there's a group called Friends of Manistee Parks, which I don't remember how many people you had, 40, 50?
It's kind of a whole bunch of volunteer positions.
Yeah, so, that group, that organization is connected with some of the others, so, you know, we'll, we'll just have to see how many people are willing to help out. You're also aware that we have a, in the current budget, we have money for new equipment at Morton Park, and we just started discussions at the Parks Commission level on selecting what equipment should go in there and, and how, and we'll probably have a volunteer build on that as well, like we did with the new Rocket Park, what, probably seven, eight years ago.
Okay, didn't we have a, where, I think, Councilman, that's a woman, Pontiac asked for money, and I thought we voted that down.
There's money in the Capitol, in the Capitol budget for playground equipment, I think it's $35,000 at Morton Park.
Was that from our vote?
Mm-hmm.
Was Morton matching?
I've reached out to Morton, they sold the company, or it was acquired, so I haven't got a response back on whether or not they're going to offer any donations yet. Still working on that.
How much money is in the Parks Department operating fund?
The annual budget's about $424,000. That covers all the payroll expenses, all of our operating, all of our maintenance, vehicle expenses, everything.
How much did you say?
424,000.
Oh, 400. I thought that seemed a lot of light, a little lighted 4,000, sorry. I, I have, I think it's a great project, project for us, and it's a great add-on. I always struggle with these kind of decisions on how to vote on something like this, because I know that this will, this serves a few more than the general population, so it's, I have, in my head, I have to evaluate the, you know, the in-kind value we get back from it. So, I've been going back and forth in my mind all morning, so, or, or all day, I should say, on which way to vote on this, so I'm still not sure, but I'm ready to go if everybody else is ready to vote. Are you guys ready to vote?
Yeah.
Heather, please, please take roll.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
That one was tough, I don't know. Consideration of updating records with the United States Army Donations Program Office or the Civil War Canon on display in Veterans Memorial Park. The United States Army Donations Program Office is requiring updated information to be completed, signed, notarized, and returned in order to retain the Civil War Canon on display in Veterans Memorial Park. At this time, council could authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the required documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Do we have any discussion?
You know, at one time, we already voted on this when it was offered to us, and at that time, I, I thought this part would have been done as well as the insurance. So, we have insured it already, so now it's literally just taking care of the details with registering it with the, the department, the Army, to, to make sure that they know that, yes, we have accepted this, this particular cannon. It was, it was lovingly restored by veterans and people in Manistee on their nickel to be able to display this cannon in Manistee.
Thank you.
And it's been here for a long time.
Any other discussion?
Was there ever agreement on this before, you know?
Only that we, I, I thought we had already voted on it, but it was, apparently, there was some misunderstanding between voting on insuring it for the city and having it part, that it is our responsibility, but, but prior to this, it was in the care of the American Legion, but this is obviously a much better site for it, and it was completely restored about three years ago.
Didn't they have some damage done to it, though? That's a?
A long time ago, yes, it was damaged, and that's why it was, it was restored.
Do you think putting up a camera, does, I mean, something may never happen again? Who knows? But, you know, they did do some damage here not too long ago, I thought.
Well, I think, I, I could be wrong, I heard that there was some attempt to maybe try to take it away, and, and again, you know, again, anything like this has, has a lot of value, and it is chained, but, you know, again, cameras on, on municipal property are probably not all that bad of an idea in general, but?
What do you think, chief?
What's that?
What do you think about putting the camera up above this cannon?
Something that we can? I think we have a conversation coming up, probably sooner than later, about camera systems in the city in general, and I think this is part of that conversation, and where do we think that we need cameras and, and funding sources and things of that, so I think it's a matter of assessing what, what are the city assets and how we prioritize those assets and what should be under surveillance or?
I mean, you know, what if, if it gets stolen or thrown over the riverbank? Do we have to, I mean, we have insurance on it, but?
Right, and cameras do a great job for us solving crime, I, I don't think they deter crime very well, but solving a crime.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly, and we utilize the ones we have in town, we, we utilize ring doorbells throughout the town to, to solve crimes, so.
Okay, I was just wondering what your ideas were.
So, if it does get damaged, we do have adequate insurance?
We do have insurance on it, yes. This was one of those items that was on my desk when I arrived, so we just wanted to make sure the American Legion, Legion noticed by us that this paperwork needed to be filled out, so we just wanted to make sure we get that in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Heather, please take roll call.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of approval of mutual aid agreement with Clare County. The Manistee City Police Department, in partnership with the Sleigh Bell Committee, requests assistance from Clare County Mounted Division. Clare County will assist with police presence and crowd control on Saturday, December 4th, 2021, during and after the Manistee Victorian Sleigh Bell Parade. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve the Clare County Mutual Aid Agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
This is the horses, right?
Yes.
Correct. Mounted patrol.
Okay.
And, and they did a really good job two years ago when they were here. Not only did they help with keeping the crowds on the sides, which was really important, so you don't have kids running out in front of these wagons and, and horses, but, but they were also a big part of the parade, I mean, they were, they were well, well received.
They do a wonderful job, and we're thankful to have them available to us.
Well, I've ridden in the parade, not as a sheriff, but I've ridden as one of the people in the parade who have, had a horse and rode in the parade, and it's actually a pretty interesting experience, because although the horse didn't have a particular problem with the parade route itself, I did have a little problem crossing 31, you know, at the end, so I'm hoping that that's a smooth process.
Certainly.
Because they, you know, horses can be conditioned to be immune to a lot of different things, but traffic lights, eh, that's kind of a different thing altogether, so, thank Shall we vote? Are we ready? Heather, please take one.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Parks Commission, PEG Commission, Planning Commission, and Tree Commission. Mayoral and managed appointments require a motion second in council-voted support. The following applications have been received. Downtown Development Authority, one vacancy for an interest member, unexpired term ending 6/30/2024, city manager appointment. DeNia Marsh, 378 River Street. I'm not sure if I was supposed to read that or not, but I did.
I believe she was gonna attend today, but it's not appearing she's in the audience.
I don't see her, she's not here.
I'll make a motion.
No, we have?
You have to appoint, just be right.
Okay, sure. So, I'll make a motion to appoint, I just recommend an appointment of DeNia Marsh to the DDA.
Okay. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Oh?
No, we need a second.
Second.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Harbor Commission, three vacancies, three terms ending 10/31/2024, two terms starting 10/31/2021. Two members can be non-residents, but must own real estate, a business, or a profession having a licensed business location in the city. Council appointment. We'll do these one at a time, so I'm waiting for somebody to make a motion.
Nominate Tom Swedenberg, 562 First Street.
I'll second.
She seconded?
They're all the same term. Heather, will you take the vote?
Ready for vote?
Yep.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
I make a motion to have Tracy Lindeman, 308 River Street, for the Harbor Commission.
Go ahead. Okay, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Planning Commission, one vacancy, term ending 10/31/24, term begins 10/31/21. Applicants must be city residents. Mayoral appointment. I would like to nominate Shelley Manberto, 347 Second Street.
I'll support.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No, she's been on a long time, hasn't she?
Well, she's actually done a great job, and she's hit it when we had a whole lot of big things rolling downhill, and I really appreciate your time spent, and thank you for coming back. Okay, anybody else? Or ready?
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Notices, communications announcements. A report from the City of Manistee Parks Commission. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Tim O'Connor will report on the activities of the Parks Commission and respond to any questions the council made regarding their activities.
Hello, councilmembers.
Mr. O'Connor, would you like?
It's a privilege to be here, so on behalf of the Parks Commission, I'd like to do our annual report for 2021, so.
She's got, do you want this, so you can go through your slideshow?
Yeah.
Yeah, just hit the down arrow.
I'm charging.
You are. Be careful of it.
Yeah, I know, right? Currently, our Parks Commission is currently meeting at 5:30 PM on the third Thursday of every month. We meet January through December. We basically have no time off. Honestly, I don't think we can afford any time off, because it takes a while to get things going and get things in motion. Lately, we've been doing it at City Parks, you know, which I thought was appropriate, weather permitting, and otherwise, we're here in the council chambers. Currently, our Parks Commission members, we have myself as chair, Robert Brook as our vice chair, Lanny Rosiga as our secretary, Kelly Grieve, who was appointed in 2021, and also Liz, who happens to be here today, so. Currently have two vacant positions, and as I've just heard, it looks like no one's applied for those two vacant positions, so. Since I've been a member of the Parks Commission for almost three years now, I've seen six resignations from our Parks Commission. It could be of various reasons why, I mean, I think honestly, some of it's just frustration sometimes and not, we seem to be spinning our wheels a little bit as far as what we want to accomplish, so hopefully, we can make some progress with that and keep going forward. We developed a mission statement. Our mission is to enrich the lives of the residents and the visitors of Manistee by providing safe, welcoming parks, recreational facilities. We strive to build community with affordable and diverse recreational and cultural opportunities for people of all ages to play and to learn. It's the vision of the Parks Commission to create a happy and healthy community through people, parks, and programs, where residents and visitors can learn, work, and also play. This is something that was, had not been established previously on our commission, and we met together to develop that. Currently, as you all know, we have 15 parks, you know, within the city of Manistee. I've currently assigned, although we have had recently two resignations, a Parks Commission member to each one of those parks, to come back with me with some type of report as far as recommendations for improvements, recommendations for future projects that we might want to do. Hopefully, in the future, when we get those, that paperwork back, we can meet with the city council and discuss the projects that we want to continue. I'll be quite honest with you, of the 15, we have a lot to do as far as improvements, and I think of city residents want to see that, too, so I'm eager to get these reports back, to get their input, but also, we'd like to have the input from the city residents themselves. There has been talk about doing some public forum, you know, for neighborhoods, to get people together collectively to decide what they want, and what they want from us, so hopefully, we'll make some progress in some of those areas of those parks. I would take up all 15 minutes if I went through each one of those line items and basically told you what we thought right now, so, but hopefully, we'll get some kind of report together for you guys, so you can kind of see it collectively. We have a lot of highlights with the city of the Manistee Parks. First Street Beach, the playground equipment there is accessible to all ages, you know, and all with any disabilities, which is a huge benefit. I see people occupy that, I think it's Rocket Park, quite a bit, so accessible, inclusive park options, the wheelchair walkways have received a lot of compliments from both beaches, which is honestly kind of nice, which makes the beach a lot more accessible. A lot of effort has been made by the DPW to make sure that that, that gets done. The concession stands, what a huge improvements, you know, burst both the First Street and also the Fifth Avenue. They're getting well-known for their food, and it's actually bringing people to the beaches, which is kind of nice, so I've seen a lot of improvement in the last couple of years. Red Samerski Park has seen a lot more activity. The DPW has recently enhanced the area, they put new signs up, put a portage on up there, basically because of the uses that that park was getting, so, which was a huge benefit to the park, so we're seeing a lot of activity there. Our beach access to Lake Michigan is plentiful, and we have great natural resources, skate parks, ballfields, basketball courts are highlights for all ages to enjoy, and we finally got the defibblers installed at both of the concession stands, which honestly, has been probably a two to three-year project. They were donated to the city two years ago, but COVID kind of put things off a little bit, and they weren't installed last year, but we made sure that we got them up this year, so that's a huge benefit. It is our goal in the future to possibly offer CPR, AED classes, you know, to city residents, if that's what they're interested in doing, but I at least like to get the concession stand people to be aware of what the defibblers are and how they operate. Be, to be honest with you, they're there all the time, so hopefully, we can get that kind of cooperation from them, and that would be nice to put that together. Current, looking for current park status, we have many repairs to complete. These pictures that I'm showing you on a screen are of the Fifth Avenue Beach, but there's a lot of work to be done. To me, it's not acceptable to allow this to happen to our parks. At my home, I have a postcard of Fifth Avenue Beach that I keep on my desk back in the 1950s or 60s, which show that we once had these beautiful parks, and for some reason, they've fallen into a little bit of decay. I don't put anybody totally responsible for this, but we need to figure out collectively how we need to fix that, because to be honest with you, when we get visitors that come to our parks, this is what they see. I mean, we have a beautiful beach, and we have a beautiful lake, and we have beautiful scenery, but for some reason, I get told about this more so than anything else. If it's not functional, then we need to get rid of it, and we need to figure out how to make that happen. To me, and to the residents and to the commission, our parks shouldn't be like this, but we need to figure out how. We need to identify grant opportunities for projects to improve functionality for our residents and visitors at our parks. As you all know, the Lions Pavilion, that's the reservation system that we have on the board. That is archaic and not, not beneficial to the residents or to the people of, that use it. There have been some conflicts, as I think Jeff will tell you, where people have actually put a postcard on there to reserve that space for a wedding, only to find out someone else had gotten that venue before them, only to come there and have it disrupted, and then have them to find, to go someplace else. To me, I think we're a lot better than that. If we had a reservation system, which easily can be put in place, people can see on our website when that park is reserved or that specific pavilion is reserved. The system is there to make it happen, I just need to work collectively with the right people to establish how we need to go forward with this, whether fees are, you know, charged for it, or, you know, cleaning fees, or whatever it might be, but this is one of our projects for 2021 that we'd like to see this up and running, so we want to get rid of the board, so. Identify possible revenue opportunities. There has been talk about charging non-city residents for the use of our facilities and maybe even for our parking. City, at Manistee, the residents pay for this. County residents that come from outside the city really have not shared in the, in the upkeep of our facilities, but yet they get to benefit from that, so. I don't know of many areas, to be honest with you, along the lakeshore where you can park for free or have the accessibility like what we have. It's a benefit of Manistee, I give that to you, but if we're going to keep our parks in the conditions of where they need to be, there needs to be some creative thinking about possible revenue that can be brought in. City residents, free of charge, you're outside the city, think of some type of system where maybe they can assist us with a little bit with some, with some type of fee, but long term, I think that needs to be looked at, it's kind of being outside the box a little bit, but I do know, I do know revenue needs to come in, so, to help us with our parks, so. We're very, very excited about what you just voted on for the Lighthouse Park Family Disc Golf Course. That's going to be a huge benefit to the city of Manistee. We've already seen Red Samerski Park and the activity with five baskets. Imagine when we have 18 installed over the Lighthouse Park. I see a lot of activity with this, I see tournaments being done, I see family activities. This is only a positive thing for the city of Manistee, so we're very excited to move forward on this, on this project, so. What we're asking for support and adopt these priorities is that we want our priorities to be your priorities. It seems to be an issue with the Parks Commission that we seem to be standing alone without having the support that we need to have to make our projects go forward. In our bylaws, the Parks Commission is an advisory board to the city council, but for some reason, and I'm not quite sure where it was lost, we don't seem to have the authority that the Parks Commission needs to get these projects rolling or get them forward. I think the Park Commission takes some blame for it, I think some other people need to take some blame for it, too, but we're really trying to get this Parks Commission back together, where we have the authority and we have the voice to start making the changes that need to be made, so it's only through the cooperation together with, with the Parks Commission and also the city council. We need to work together to get back to the quality parks, Manistee was once known for. We have to share understanding of what will get us there. These priorities are, are starting that direction, and we're asking for 2022. The Lighthouse Park Family Disc Golf Course is a top priority for us. We need to find funding to repair and upkeep our parks, which seems to be an issue, and whether that be in Jeff's area, hiring additional people, or whatever needs to be done, but I honestly think with the whole COVID pandemic, we've seen a huge increase in our city parks. If people are enjoying what we have, we just need to get it back to where it was, so, and we also want to make sure that we work on that reservation system, we all work together, so. I think the reservation system is only a positive thing for Manistee. To be able to call or even get on a website, reserve a spot, and someone's assured that they're going to have that spot, whether it be a wedding, whether it be a graduation party, or some type of event, I think is a, a positive thing, nothing negative about that at all, so. And that's my report. Any questions at all?
I have some questions, so I'm not, I'm not really familiar with, like, what you do, like, what your range is on getting things done. I've seen the emails back and forth and read them.
Right.
So I don't know, what do you need so you can get these projects going forward? Because some of these are very, you know, like, the updated equipment, like, outdated equipment, the broken equipment, like, a lot of that stuff needs to be fixed and not, you know, keep pushing year after year.
Right.
So what do you need so you can keep moving forward?
I think it's somewhat, so I've been on this commission for three years, and since I've started, when we started our Parks Commission meeting, we met for maybe 15, 20 minutes. We just came in, went through the motions, we all went home, and then when we started getting people on the commission, like Liz and Tom and Kelly, we want to do something. So what, what I think has happened in the past is our Park Commission lost its authority, and there was no interest in getting it back. Well, now you have a body who's totally interested in reinventing things, being creative and going forward, but I think it's going to take us, honestly, to meet with you guys maybe once a month on these city council meetings, giving you updates on what we want to do. This reservation system, it should have been done already, you know, to be quite honest with you. It takes me getting with somebody or the appropriate person within the city of Manistee, the system is already there on the computer, how we can put it on this, on the computer and start making it happen, publicize it, but I honestly think it's just the, the collaboration of our commission and the city council.
So if we put, like, something on a work session and had it to where we could figure, because some of the stuff is, I mean, it's not rocket science.
No, no.
I mean, it just, everybody, everybody's got their hands on everything, but nothing gets completed.
Correct.
Like, everything gets pushed to the following year.
Yeah, and I, I think this, I mean, we even had a, they had a meeting, a work session with you guys on our liaison for the Parks Commission, whatever happened with that.
That's exactly my point.
Yeah.
Is everything, everything gets brought up, but nothing gets to the finish line.
No. So finally, we're like, we want to get it done, we're not going to settle for anything less, and I've, I've talked to the mayor on, on several occasions, it honestly is a part of us coming here to explain to you, too, we want to get these things done, and how do we need to move forward. So I, I think the work sessions are a great idea, you know, and, and take each one of these, I think the Lighthouse Park Family Disc, I think we can, hopefully, we get the grant for that, and we're, we're going forward, you know, and hopefully, we get that installed in 2022. I think we need to prioritize the funding for the parks, you know, to make these improvements, because you've got to admit, it's embarrassing when people come from out of the city and they see our parks, and I'm not saying all our parks are in bad condition, but they all need help, you know, but I would like to see a priority of what we feel should be corrected and changed, and hopefully, it just seems like when we make the recommendations, nothing, like you said, nothing goes forward, and I'll be honest with you, I think that's why we've seen the amount of resignations that we've seen in the past from our Parks Commission. Why be on something where we're not making a change? So I have a philosophy, I can be responsible for accepting the way that things are, or I can be responsible for making the changes that need to be made. We're ready to make the changes that need to be made, and you've got a Parks Commission that's ready to go. So I think helping us with these work sessions, which I think assure that things are going to go forward, even the park, the reservation system, it's there, but you guys need, how do I make it work?
Okay.
You know, then, how do I, do we charge people? Is it appropriate to charge? Are we charging out of city residents? There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but it's easy work, you know, to be quite honest with you. We just need to look at what other cities are doing on the same system, which I have a lot of information on, and we just all put it together.
Okay. Can we put that on a work session?
Yes.
So if we put it on a work session, you can bring to us exactly what you need to move forward?
Sure.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, because it's going to take, honestly, we can come up with ideas, it's going to take somebody from the city to put it all together, you know, I'm not an IT guy, but I know the schedule's on there already, so it just takes a, a person doing it, but yeah, that'd be great to do that on the work session.
Okay. And we need, we need, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Where is it on the schedule?
The city of Manistee, if I'm not right, Tom, has some type of system where.
You could, you could leverage, like, the Microsoft software, you could leverage MRA's reservation system, there's lots of ways to do it. We do it in Mason County, do some software program for county reservations.
You got that, Heather, on the city's website?
Well, we have Microsoft Office that we use, but I don't know, that'd be a question for probably IT right.
Okay.
But there are, there are out-of-the-box programs designed exclusively for park reservations.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not a, it's not anything that is, it has to be created, it, they're, they're already out there, and they fit with municipal systems. Military has used them for 15 years, maybe longer.
It's just what we have available in the city, you know, whether it be Fifth Avenue Beach, whether it be the Lions Pavilion, whether it be First Street, the, the Band Pavilion, you know, there, I mean, people would love to be able to reserve things and have that assurance that they're going to have it, you know, and avoid these misunderstandings that we've all had in the past that have just gone on way too long, so I think a work session's a great idea.
I think we should have multiple work sessions.
Oh, absolutely.
And start early, before we even get, dive into trying to put together the budget for next year, because really, after we pass the budget, we're kind of locked into what we can do.
Correct.
So it's really important that we, we have a plan and a financial plan to back it up, so, I mean, honestly, November's really.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great idea, work sessions, yeah, absolutely.
Be on every work session.
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, we need to, we actually need to have a really good plan if you want to.
I think we can get a lot done that way, absolutely.
And I, and I, you know, I know I passed along information to you and to our city manager today about the leadership program group is looking at projects to do, and they are looking for a spring project, so they thought they might look at maybe, perhaps, cleaning up a couple of our parks.
Right, right.
So if you make a connection with them, maybe they'll be able to, they're, I know they're having a meeting October 15th to go over what they may or may not be able to accomplish, so it's a good chance to get our number in there.
I would agree.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, I commend you guys for all the hard work you're doing. I started on the Parks Commission seven years ago, I was there for two years, and it's a lot of work. It can be very frustrating, I know there's a lot of the same stuff we were dealing with seven years ago, so.
Yeah, I read back and prior meeting, now it's, I'm like, whatever happened? And that's exactly what she said before, it's like, it's always been there, but just nothing's ever followed through, and we're tackling a few issues, so we can get these And we're tackling a few issues so we can get these off our books, and then we can tackle more issues further on. But until we can get these things accomplished, we just, we just want to move forward for that. So, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you. That was a great presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hang on. Moving on to concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make some comments? Anybody? I see somebody. Please step forward if you would like to make some comments.
Why I actually came for the parks, but now that I'm here, I had a question. And the question is on the water bill, and it doesn't affect me, but it could affect some people. The billing date on the, we kept track a couple of months. The billing date is nine twenty-four. We received it ten-one, and the due date is ten-twelve. Now, if someone, say the month of September or whatever, is traveling, that's hard to get, you might not even have your mail picked up in twelve days. And the penalty is ten percent if you're late, or if you're between, if you're paid every two weeks and it happens to fall between pay, that might be, you know, that's, if you have twelve days to pay it, that seems like that's, doesn't seem like enough to me. So, I thought, and now there was a thing in the paper a week ago that the mail's going to become slower. So, it might be slower to receive it, and it's going to be slower for the people if they're actually mailing in a payment. And I know they can drop it off, and I know that there's auto payment. But if someone, say an elderly person, wants to still pay by check, I think we should at least give them like a normal credit card or something, probably the thirty days, or not charge ten percent. So, it's just a interesting, something to look at. My name was, I forgot to say it, Liz Lasky. Live on 537 Fourth Street.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would care to make a comment? Hearing none, I'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items. I met with Ron Stillman the other day. We have the traffic study coming tomorrow that Chief Glass and Spicer organized, so they'll be taking a look at, at the traffic flows at the school. And we see that as some, an opportunity to work together with the school on. Same, I had a productive conversation with them, talking about Sands Park is another thing we can work on together, that tennis court there. The other item is, and this wasn't for closed session, but the, we received two offers on Monroe Lot Number Two, which is over by Harbor Village. So, I guess it was posted back in March of 2018, but we received one offer and then a second offer. We think those are pretty good, so we'll be bringing one forward in the next, I think the next council item for council approval. I think the high offer was ninety thousand, so we did get the pre-approval letter, so we're, we're looking to move forward on that. They are aware of that sewer and water hookup as well, so they'll work through that issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sealer.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Heather.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Uh, Chief Glass. Mr. McCullough.
I do have one, one update for council. The Rural Development Phase One Contract A, which did all the pipelining in the city and the manhole relining, we are finally at the end of that contract. The contractor's working on punch list items, but there's a number of things that they have to do on US thirty-one, the sewer that's below US thirty-one. So, if you remember last, late last fall, and it extended into winter, they had a, the two center lanes closed between First Street and Eighth Street. They're going to begin, they will be setting those up again tomorrow. There's three different contractors that have to do work. So, the way we understand it, and we, we've been trying to get them to pin down exactly what their dates and what their plans are, and during this meeting, we just got an update. They're planning to set that up for the remainder of this week and do as much work as they can, remove it for the weekend, reset it up next week, and then they anticipate that they will have all their work done the following week. We've made sure that we've amended our MDOT permit for that. So, it's really just a lane closure, both northbound and southbound. It doesn't, it, it doesn't close the road or anything, but just wanted to make you aware.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jeff, since you're up there.
Sure.
Um, do we shut off the power at the Lions Pavilion at all?
Um, I don't think we shut the power off. We do shut the water off, but not the power.
Okay, because I had a Girl Scout meeting the other night there, and there was no power.
In the pavilion itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll check on that.
Okay, we will.
Jeff, can you explain this deal of discussed using Ninth Street Boat Launch and land acquisition for the DNR requirement for the marina mine sale? What's that?
So, basically, and I'll try, try to keep this short. Basically, the city has received an offer to purchase a portion of the marina land that surrounds 440 River Street, which is, was purchased by Friconos. In research on that parcel, there was grant money from the state or pass-through from the federal government to help purchase that land to make it a marina. Because of that, it encumbers the land, and in order for the city to sell it, it has to then take whatever land we sell, and we have to devote new land that has the same encumbrances, the same strings attached to it. What we are proposing is, as you're aware, we purchased ten acres of land from Morton Salt to help with the expansion of the wastewater treatment. But a lot of that, or a portion of that land benefits Ninth Street Boat Launch. Ninth Street Boat Launch is on partially more, was Morton Salt, Morton Salt property, and partially on Consumers Energy property, and the city had easements. So, now that we have fee ownership of that launch, it, it helps us apply for grants and so forth in the future. But we're, what the state requires us to do is a conversion. So, to convert the, the land that we would sell to Friconos, we need to identify another parcel, and we're proposing that as part of the conversion. If they approve that, it doesn't take any additional out-of-pocket cost, maybe a little surveying, but we don't have to actually buy the land because we've already done it. And then it satisfies all those requirements.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Middleton?
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Uh, Chief, Cameron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Nope, I'm good.
Councilmember Sullivan?
I just got a couple of things. Do we have a list of the ARP funds yet, what we can use that for?
Potential projects, I mean, I think we're going to be meeting with that, with Ed when he gets back, but we can, yeah, we can sell, set that up for a study session if you'd like.
Um, and then I just got one more question. How do we advertise for the commission vacancies?
How do we advertise them in the news advocate and on the website? And I believe Kelly might put them on Facebook as well.
Okay. I, that's all I got.
Okay. Aaron?
I have nothing.
Mr. Grabowski?
I ask my questions.
Just again, shout out to Parks Commission. I know that you guys have been working really hard to, to make improvements and do appreciate the effort and expertise that you have on your commission to get things done. And I, I do applaud somebody who's involved with the scheduling of the Lions Pavilion with monotonous regularity. The fact of having an automated system really makes sense. Because again, if you're, if you're just stopping by to use it and to get out of the rain, that's one thing, but if you're trying to, to have a family event or, or a wedding or something that really requires planning and, and timing, to not have something that firms that facility in your favor is really, really challenging. And, you know, I end up telling people, you know, you, you have a reservation system, but, you know, hire somebody to go down there at six o'clock in the morning, camp out, and then it's yours, right? Squatter's rights. But that's not the way that we should go. And again, we can certainly debate whether or not you charge, but certainly, a fee for cleaning is reasonable and fair and, and equitable for everyone. It, it should not be left in worse condition than you find it. And, and again, the problem is, is that with limited resources, it's difficult to, to kind of keep up facilities. So, that might be a way to, to kind of pick up the, the quality of the facilities as well. Again, good job, guys.
I have one request to make of city manager, Gamble. Mrs. Lasky came forward and asked about the water bills, and it's not the first time I've completely, this, you know, argument over, you know, when is the appropriate time to issue the bill, you know, how quickly can we turn around and pay it, et cetera, et cetera. I think we should have something publicly, and maybe Ed could prepare a presentation on how we process the water bills. I don't think people understand the, the process. So, if you could get that on a work session or have Ed make a presentation on that, I think that would be most helpful.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
All right, that was all I had. Now, we're going to, consideration of a closed session, and all we're going to discuss is the union contract negotiations because the sale of a city-owned lot has been moved off to a further date. So, we need a motion to go.
Sure. Motion to move into?
Close session.
Close session.
Okay. All right.
I'll take a vote. Mayor Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan? Mayor Protem Shemansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So, what we've done with the sale is that? Says it's express the contingent, uh, appealed by the city council.
Thank you.
That way, you know, it does, it's scheduled council. You just make the best deal, and then they can vote it over.
As long as you, when you sign with the provision that says that you're not committing the city to it, you're just.
Yep. Okay.
He did.
I did? Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take whatever you give me.
Right in that room, you get it.
Doesn't need to be official level, just an email.
We're moving.
Yeah, 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 just something I can.
No, we'll come back out, and then we officially.
All right.
Councilwoman Poniac, you see what you're clocking?
It's a plug-in.
Yep.
Oh, so the battery guy. I don't even see the port.
There's not one.
It is. I think the back of it, it's like a, like the back.
I only made it up.
Just swirled it over.
I'm still trying to write.
You're running show.
Okay. Well, thank you all. Speaking with Ed and Chief Glass, it sounds like there needed an update on the negotiations. Really, um, originally, my understanding was this kind of contentious at first, but since then, they've come back to the table, and it looks like there's been a proposal where both sides are thinking of taking it back immediately next week. But we're looking at just kind of, right now, it's a proposal, so it's not, you're on T eight, but if you come together in terms of two point five percent of each of these will each year, eliminating kind of the, um, the first, kind of starting weight in the third year, it can help us improve a little bit more better. No, no change of action to, in that arbitration decision last time, so if you can act and you have to make changes at this time. And then just kind of, the other, really, the other things were kind of small, right? I'm just like, you know, if you're relying on other, kind of, kind of contributions. I just want to let everyone know, it looks like it's going there next week. I don't know if they want to change anything, but I'm hopeful this gets passed, and we can bond with the C O A. They're probably going to see out this plan. They didn't, they didn't ask for that either, because that was part of the. I don't know if you were working on it. No, it wasn't, it wasn't that. It was, I'm just working. We were asking for months of work, just like. So, we, um. Just a little bit of an option to, because traditionally, you have a day shift, an action, and then a rest shift. Okay, all covered. During arbitration last time, the, the schedule was changed and it needed more provisions. It's extremely, um, I was in the other side of things with the contract negotiations, but because we have that in there, it's, it's not, it's a fresh one. Is that the question? Because I thought that was one of the things we were fighting, but we're taking that off. Just because it's a recent arbitration decision to. And.
So, my only other closed session was virtual?
Yeah, so now.
I thought we just locked the door.
Which we could, but we never have.
Okay.
What's your water bill?
You know, you should look. I mean.
My water bill, ninety-two dollars. It was last, the month before, it was a hundred and twenty-something.
All right, so I guess mine's not, I, I pay a hundred and thirty or a hundred and.
Summertime, that's my, that's my summer.
That's my year round. There's two of us.
So, we need to, we do need to do a motion. I have to restart the meeting.
I was just thinking, I was just thinking, wanting to get you back in.
We're back in open.
I said it, what are you going to do?
Mayor Protem, we're back in open session. I do need to get this going real quick, and then we'll do a.
Motion.
We'll take a motion, or.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.